Testing one, two.
All right, good. Okay, good. Yeah, I called and Tara, it forwarded it to Tara and I was like, oh my God. Anyway, okay. So we need to call Dave? Pardon me? Yeah, okay. 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 Thank you. Sounds very clear. How am I coming across? Clear or loud or what? Okay, great. Thanks. Okay. Yeah, okay. Do you have, may I?
You're listening to KCXU.
Right, exactly. Yeah, right. After that signal. I have 5:54. What time do you have? Okay, okay, yeah. But, but do you have the same time I do, 5:54? Okay, good. Just, just to make sure. Yeah, good. Yeah, let's call him.
The mailbox belonging to...
Dave Cortezzi.
Is full and cannot, cannot...
Way to fuck it up and make it nervous. Make people nervous, huh? Okay. Oh, you mean we're actually live right now? Oh my goodness. I'm so sorry. Forgive my professionalism. It, it's... Oh, shoot. Oh, shoot. Okay, all right. That's not good. Okay, well, anyway, so welcome. Okay. Okay. It's all good. That's right. Every day above ground is a good day. I know. In some days it is. Yeah, you got that right. Oh my goodness. Yes. I'm a single mom. We know about that. Single parents. Yeah, that was just after a minute. That was right before I called you. Yeah. Yes. Okay, I'll call him right now. Okay. I'll call him and then, uh, I guess I'll... Okay, all right. Thanks. Oh, I have to hold you on the call? Say on this and add a call. Got it. Okay. You're welcome. Okay, Manu, can you hear us? Uh, Dave, Dave Cortezzi, Supervisor Cortezzi, are you still on the line?
Yes.
Okay, very good. All right. Manu's gonna make it happen. Okay. Okay. Okay, great. Thank you. Hi Supervisor Cortezzi, it's Belinda Quesada and I'm a former county employee. We've met just socially. We don't know each other, of course. But I thank you for doing this. I'm real excited to interview you and, um, and, um, you know, just listen to what's new and what the people need to know about. Um, I wanted to ask you about the pronunciation of your name.
Uh, Cort- Cortezzi.
Cortezzi. Okay, good. Thank you so much. Okay, so, um, at the end, I'm going to ask you as a final close to end on a kind of a positive, happy note, if there is such a thing. Um, uh, what is making you happy? Um, that's the question I have. And, um, so like for me, it's a TV program I'm watching right now, an Amazon Prime program. Um, and if you could think of something not pers- I mean, personal, not professional, not like, you know, something to do with the virus or something else. That would be great.
All right.
Just think of that and, yeah. Ready? Okay. Yeah, Cortezzi. Yeah. Okay, thank you. Okay.
You're listening to KCXU LP 92.7 FM on your dial in San Jose, California.
Welcome to our one-hour weekly radio town hall series on COVID-19 pandemic with Santa Clara County Supervisor Dave Cortezzi from District Three. We'll introduce him shortly. First, a little housekeeping. I'd like to let you know that KCXU LP 92.7 FM radio is a nonprofit community radio station here in San Jose, California. And the station amplifies diverse voices and provides local opportunities to tell stories, share your experiences, and strengthen our connection to each other in our community. And I'm really excited to be a part of the program today. And our radio call letters are KCXU LP. And the initials LP refer to low power, which is why some of you may be listening to our broadcast on our website. We've been operational for, um, over, a little over a year. But, um, the, um, you know, we're just getting, we're in our early stages in getting up and running and increasing our bandwidth and so on as, as the months go by. But the website we'd like to address you or like to have you go to today is KCXUCOVID19.org. Once again, KCXUCOVID19.org. If you go there and you click on Live, uh, Radio Town Hall Live, you'll be able to experience the program. You'll be able to text us and, um, call us and let us know what your concerns are. And anything to do with COVID-19, we're gonna try our best to answer. And in any case, we want to welcome in our guest. First, I wanted to introduce myself. I'm sorry. It's Belinda Quesada. That's who I am. I'm gonna be your host for today's radio town hall meeting. I'm, of course, sheltering in place like all of you are, and I'm working at home. And believe it or not, this broadcast is coming to you from my home office in Almeda Valley. So it's pretty exciting for all of us. Listeners that are interested in hearing the live stream can again go to KCXUCOVID19.org and click on Radio Town Hall Live. So please don't be shy about asking Supervisor Cortezzi your questions. And there are two ways to reach us, so I'm gonna get into the details now. The phone that you can call us to give us your question is 408-634-8086. And the text message for, which is a separate number, is 408-480-7833. And we have to do it that way because of the situation now. So we apologize for the two numbers. But if you go to KCXUCOVID19.org, you can again see that information and be able to work through what's best for you to communicate with us. Okay, so a bit about our guest. We're very, um, very proud to have Supervisor Dave Cortezzi join us. He has, by, by way of his professional background, he is a board of super- he's a supervisor for District Three for the Santa Clara County. And he's been serving on, um, the board for over a decade. And he was a board president for four years. He's also served eight years as a city councilman and two years as vice mayor of San Jose. He's been a trustee for the Eastside Union High School District for eight years and has really dedicated his life to community service. And we appreciate him. He has an impressive record of public service. Welcome to the show Supervisor Dave Cortezzi. Thank you for lending us, uh, or for leading us in this town hall meeting tonight. And where should we begin to talk about the COVID-19?
Well, me, maybe, first of all, thank you very much for doing this. I want to thank, um, thank the station for accommodating, uh, you know, these periodic town hall meetings are very important for people. If people are gathering information wherever they can, of course.
Absolutely.
I think to some extent, uh, these, uh, radio town halls are really creating opportunity for people to listen in and get very fresh, very current updates. Um, and today is a really good day for that because the new shelter orders just came out today. They will be effective May fourth. Um, we were under shelter in place orders that were set to expire May third. Um, the public health official has certain criteria that we can talk about later. Um, you know, in terms of when we're gonna kind of ratchet down instead of ratcheting up, when we're gonna start easing up more in terms of shelter in place or maybe just stop doing it altogether. But that, that wasn't yet. And in fact, Monday, the public health official Sarah Cody for the County of Santa Clara, who has sole authority on these matters, even separate from the Board of Supervisors, she announced, okay, we're gonna have shelter in place, um, until the end of May, uh, through 31st. But she didn't indicate Monday whether it would be identical or different or what. And, and I think in today, today, the new information came forward and I'll go through it right now. Um, I do think it caused a little bit of confusion with some people. It caused, uh, upset or even, you know, discouragement because they thought, wow, that's it? I mean, you're just extending it for another month basically and you're not saying anything else.
Mm-hmm, right.
Where's the explanation? So I think what people didn't realize is in the fine print, she said, and on Wednesday, uh, I will let you know, or, you know, in a couple of days here, we're gonna let you know, um, what changes we're making, if any. And they were, of course, working on some changes. Um, some of those changes, I had some persuasive, um, a persuasive role in mostly to do with, uh, construction, the construction industry and getting construction workers back out there. Um, I was particularly worried about the residential side of it, given the homeless problem that we have. And the fact that residential, residential construction usually means somebody's waiting to move into a house. Otherwise, it wouldn't be under construction. That, they're rarely under construction when there isn't a market for them or a need for them. And
Oh, true.
In this case, we, in this case, we have, in the Bay Area as a region, we are about 600,000 residences or residential units behind the pace or behind the curve that we're supposed to be on. So it's another curve discussion. This time not flattening the curve, but really how far behind the curve are we in terms of where we need to be. And of course, that predated COVID. So we've been talking about, is there a way to start looking at risk with some work, with some occupations? And instead of, certainly you have to have a classification that's essential and non-essential. Because essential would mean people who are frontline health workers and, um, and such, firefighters, first responders, et cetera. But how about also having a category that is risk versus, um, you know, that is risk analysis, high risk versus very low risk? And how can you perhaps create low risk by working hard to put together additional rules and protocols in place for certain industries? And you can think, you think through that with construction, that could work with, I think, with things like dentistry, that could work. Uh, it's a well-regulated industry or, you know, it's medicine really, but it's, it's well-regulated and they could be even more careful, um, about how they conduct themselves relative to COVID. So we'll talk about that. I think our faith-based organizations, um, are struggling right now because they can't convene people. And they will be, um, you know, that they, I think that's another place where there's some flexibility. There, there, there are more than one ways, more than one way to convene worship, right? We've seen some of that. We've seen some innovation, but maybe there's a way to write some new rules to, at least, at least so that temporarily, until this vicious, uh, virus, you know, dissipates, uh, dies out at some point or we get a vaccine. In the interim, how can we make some new rules about convening in some of these other areas? So here's what they announced today. Public Health Department announced, as I said, the new order will go in effect technically at 11:59 PM, Sunday, May 30. And it's gonna remain in effect, uh, through 11:59 PM on Sunday, May 31st. Unless the health officer amends or extends it. So technically, she has the power on any given day to, you know, hold a news conference and say, I changed my mind. Um, but unless you hear something different, this is what the law is now. Um, most of the prior orders restrictions, um, will remain in place, Belinda. Um, and I think that was the overwhelming message that came out Monday. As I said, that was met with some dismay. But however, the new order does make a number of significant changes. And let me just touch on those real quick. Under the new order, all construction projects can resume. That wasn't the case before, provided the-
Supervisor Cortezzi, I'm sorry. Get, just to clarify for everyone, when you say new construction orders, that means that industry can go back to work?
Yes, uh, provided, provided that they comply with construction project safety protocols that were issued as part of today's order. So there were actually a couple of pages of rules, new rules, just for the construction industry that were put in place today that, um, they, they are required to abide by under penalty of criminal law. If they want to open up a job site, um, a construction site, then there's a whole bunch of things they have to do. Of course, they have to have PPEs. Every, everybody has to have personal protection equipment.
Okay.
Like gloves. Um, there has to be, all, all the things that we, most people already know, right? Mask, sanitizer. You know, real soap and water stations that are always stocked up. Um, they have to have a single gate to go through. No one who has any symptoms, um, of anything is, are gonna be allowed on a job site. Um, there's oversight. There's inspectors that are COVID-trained that are there to make sure that not only physical distancing occurs, but that, um, inappropriate persons or unauthorized persons aren't, you know, walking onto the site and contaminating people or bringing the contagion. Um, and, and there's, there's rules about shift work, how they need to break up the shifts so that you don't have plumbers and electricians and everyone all trying to work on the same, you know, in the same area at the same time. These are just examples of some of the rules. And if you can imagine two pages of rules like that, um, that's what they're gonna have to abide by if they wanna reopen job sites. And we hope they will, but they've gotta do it, do it right.
Okay, right.
And it, and, and let me say, it, it applies to, yes, all construction, commercial as well as residential.
Okay, right. Mm-hmm.
Um, what was approved before, and I wanna say this, Belinda, because it could be a matter of confusion. There's probably some people listening thinking, well, I've already seen construction. I've seen, I've seen them working on the roads. I've seen them working power lines.
You might.
I've seen them working on, I've seen crews working on, on the roads doing tree trimming even. Well, those are all considered public works projects. If you've seen construction recently in this county, it was likely that it was a government job. Only government construction jobs were allowed to go forward until, until today. And the, and the only other jobs that were allowed to go forward were residential communities that were being built, um, at the low income, uh, under low income guidelines. So everything else was banned, including offices, campus industrial, you name it. It was all banned, even reg- regular market rate residential apartments or, or houses until today. And all of that, all of that opened up again, um, provided they comply with the construction project safety protocols that were issued. In addition, if you're tired of hearing about construction.
No, but that's, it's a good start. It's, so, yeah, and that was, that's important because that's gonna put a lot, make a lot of families happy that have, um, you know, people and their family that are in construction. And of course, on the other hand, we do need the housing. And, uh, so it's essential. It is essential, yeah.
It is. It is important.
It tends to go back to work, yeah.
And so there were some other areas that were cha- there were changes made. And, and I think all, and another important thing, whether it's construction or some of these other areas, is the hopefulness. I, I think, you know, I, I was very, I was much happier today because I felt like the 2 million people that we represent here in the county, in Santa Clara County, as, as a Board of Supervisors, you know, they got a little more hope today, right? They heard, oh, oh, changes are possible. Things are changing. Things, uh, the rules can be changed. And I think that encourages people. And people have sacrificed so much already to try to-
Yeah, that's true. Very true.
You know, I just need to make sure they have hope. So
Yeah, it's very true.
Under the, under the new order today, um, childcare establishments.
Oh, right. That's one of the big ones. Yeah.
Summer, summer camps. Um, schools and other educational recreational programs can operate to provide care and supervision for children to allow persons who are working in essential business or outdoor businesses or perform, performing minimum basic operations to access childcare. So basically what they're saying is pretty much any kind of childcare establishment, whether it's a summer program, a school program, or... They're, they're part of the working, um, community that's out there working right now.
Frontline, yeah. Frontline responders.
It would free frontline responders. It would not be construction workers. I mean,
Right, okay.
Right now, it could be a childcare provider that needs some childcare for his or her own children, right?
Sure.
Anyone, anyone who's authorized to work under the orders is also, also triggers the ability for someone else to provide the childcare for them. So those businesses can now move forward. Um, all of, all of these businesses, um, all of these operations, they ha- have to comply with, um, the restrictions, um, in the order, which has to do with childcare, for example. Um, they have to be 12 or fewer children, you know, in a cohort or in a, in a facility. And there are other rules, of course, to make sure that, um, the spread of COVID-19 is, is further contained. We do, last thing we-
Yeah, I read that, yeah.
Let childcare, um, happen or even let construction sites happen and then have a whole bunch of children or construction workers start getting sick in clusters.
Right.
And then they go home and make more people sick. And this is, as I said, just a vicious virus. It's not like we, we get, we're used to as parents, I have four children, thinking, okay, the kids went to school, they picked up something, they came home and now I got, I got a cold.
Right, right.
Maybe I got the flu. This is-
Which is common, yeah, with kids.
Yeah, this is, this is, is more contagious than a cold or flu. And it's harder to recognize, almost impossible in some people because a lot of the carriers are without symptoms. And so they're just people that look like they're having, having a great day and they're not having any problems at all. And all of these people, they're carriers of the virus. And if you, if you didn't distance from them, or if a child did not distance from them, or if a construction worker did not distance from them, they're gonna get sick. And then what happens if they go home and see grandma and grandpa? Or whatever we all call.
Yeah, right, right. Right, other loved ones, yeah. Sure.
Other loved ones. But anyone right now that's, um, getting into their seventies or eighties is, is a little more vulnerable because usually they have some underlying weaknesses or asthma. It could be- asthma. It could be, maybe they, they had a heart condition that's now been corrected, but maybe they're, you know, uh, have, have a, just have a compromised immunity.
Right, right, yes, mm-hmm.
And, and this is, this is where the virus becomes very lethal.
Right.
So the other thing is that they've allowed is outdoor businesses. Outdoor businesses, um, and they're defined here as to which ones are, are included. They're, they're allowed to operate now, and people are allowed to visit them to perform work or to obtain goods, services, or supplies. So think of outdoor nurseries, for example. Uh, those businesses can now open, and the workers can go there, and again, practice physical distancing and,
Mm-hmm.
you know, hygiene and everything when they're there.
Right.
But um, this is, this is, the idea here is that these are for outdoor um businesses that, that normally operate primarily outdoors even before shelter in place. So what I mean by that is nurseries and landscapers and agricultural operations, they're, they were already outdoor businesses before. What they, the reason they specified that, as I understand it, speaking to the attorney today, is because they didn't want people who now have indoor businesses to suddenly just convert them to outdoor businesses, and then you just have a massive problem, and then all of a sudden we have a big surge in um, in COVID uh infections again. So they're, they're, they're basically grandfathering in those kind of businesses that traditionally have operated outdoors, is what they're saying.
And, and it's, right, and, and that's a good thing. It's a good thing. It sounds like we're doing a slow rollout into what could possibly be the new way we're going to live in, in twenty twenty going forward.
There may be some of these changes that, that we, we hold on to for a long time. I'll tell you, um, I may have mentioned it on one of the previous town halls, but, you know, one of my, when I'm on the, because I'm on the Board of Supervisors, I actually have over thirty other assignments besides the Board of Supervisors. So I'm on the other agency boards and commissions, and most of those have meetings, and I have to go to those meetings because they have to have a quorum to do business. If I don't go
Wow.
they have to vote. So, so I, so I have to go to all these things, and I, I'm fine with it, you know, it's part of my work and I like my work.
Mm-hmm.
But um, one of those, one, well, actually, two of the agencies are in San Francisco.
Mm-hmm.
So people from all over the Bay Area, like me, who are elected officials, you know, generally jump in their cars, some of them get on public transportation, and they go to San Francisco for a meeting at nine or nine-thirty in the morning, usually on a Wednesday or a Friday. And we just do that, like, like there's some reason we have to be there face-to-face. And when we're there, we talk very aggressively about how we want to combat climate change, for example, and how we want to reduce fossil fuels, and how so much of our greenhouse gas emissions are coming from vehicles. And, you know, now we're doing those meetings all by Zoom. And I'm thinking, why were we doing that?
Right, right. Oh, my goodness, yeah.
Why don't we do the meetings like this and save all that pollution? It's more efficient, not to mention the time involved and commuting back.
Absolutely, yeah.
Especially, and it reduces congestion in general. Somebody else gets a, a shorter ride that day because we're not on the road. So
Right.
Um, so that's just one example of many, many, many things that may be, that we may be rethinking in the future because we were forced into a different experience um with COVID, and we're now seeing, you know, maybe some of the ways we did things before weren't, weren't really that smart. They were almost just habitual.
Right.
And the world has allowed us to, to change. Um, so, you know, there's still social distancing protocols for business that are very specific. Um, one good thing is that all residential moves are now allowed to proceed. We were getting lots and lots of constituent emails last few weeks from people who's, would say things like, my daughter is moving from San Diego, is it okay if I go get her? Or how do we move from our old house to our new house if, you know, if it's banned, if, if you aren't, if you're supposed to shelter in place? So that's been allowed now. Again, it's very, very much makes common sense. People need to be able to, to move from one residence to another or help their relatives move. Um, and then there's certain recreational facilities that don't involve touching, a lot of touching, um, recreational activities, not just facilities. Um, golf and tennis, for example, are traditionally sports. I, I don't play either well. I played very limited of either of those sports. Um, baseball, I, I, I can play pretty well, I used to. But on, on golf, if you think about golf and tennis.
That was scary.
Yeah, you're, you're all, there's fiscal distancing that's very natural. It's just part of the sport. You don't, you're not supposed to crowd somebody in those sports that's hitting the ball. Um, and in tennis, there's actually a net between you. So, so some of those things, if you were to go to the website, which is SCCPHD, which stands for Public Health Department um dot org, SCCPHD dot org, you would see, um, you would see a more, more detail on what recreational activities are allowed.
Perfect, okay, good. Let me just interrupt you very quickly, Supervisor Cortezi, just to give our station ID again and allow people to continue to uh send their questions in and/or text. And we're, you're listening to KCXULP ninety-two point seven FM. And if you want to join us, uh, we're in conversation about the COVID nineteen virus and pandemic. And in Santa Clara County, we have Supervisor Dave Cortezi uh joining us for the hour from six to seven PM. It's a weekly series um that we're very proud to be a part of, and we want to get to your questions next. So Supervisor Cortezi, what, um, you, okay, so we, we spent the first almost half hour talking about um some of the new uh changes today that Dr. Sarah Cody um released or, or affirmed. And, and so can we get into some of the um questions from people? Or, or do you want to add anything to that before I move forward?
No, we pretty well, pretty well covered all the major categories. And like I said, for those who want detail about recreation or other things, again, go to the website, SCCPHD dot org, and
Okay.
Yeah, we can go to questions now.
Great, okay. And then we can also put that, um, Manu, our engineer and um, um, engineer extraordinaire and the founder, CEO, he will put that up on our website. We'll have him do SCCPHD dot org for our listeners to follow up with. And that was one of our questions, actually, like what uh, what resource, resources or websites are available, or that you would recommend, rather, to our constituents, to, to our listeners, to let them know um where they can get real-time information. So we'll go to that in just a few moments and talk more about that. But um, comparing San Jose to large cities that mirror ours, how are Silicon Valley residents doing um overall in your opinion? Because we don't hear too much about, you know, the number of, of lost souls that, that we've had. And, you know, every, every death is a sad one, and it, it impacts a family greatly. And with this, you know, awful virus um that we all have to be aware of, um, we, you know, like you were saying earlier, we just don't know. And it's sort of insidious that way. We don't know who's contagious and who isn't unless there's, if they don't have symptoms, I'm saying. So how are we doing overall? That's, that's a question that we want to
You know, we're ju- we're, we're doing well overall, especially if you look at the original objectives um six or seven weeks ago, when we, well, we, I shouldn't say we, because um much like you, even though I'm a member of the Board of Supervisors, in an emergency situation, even the Board of Supervisors has to comply with what the public health officer says. And there's reasons for that. Obviously, if we had an earthquake or under attack, obviously, this is a, you know, a pandemic. Um, somebody who is focused on the health of the community and only that, you know, is, is going to have broad extraordinary powers. And that's what Sarah Cody has in this county, and that's what the other, the other public health officers in the other counties have. That's the way California law is set up. In fact, she could even, she could even put forward a rule or a law that's more strict than what the governor has put out. And under California law, the more strict rule is the one that, that wins if there's a conflict. So extraordinary powers she has. And, and of course, she came out with first a rule that we couldn't congregate in groups larger than a thousand. You may remember that.
Mm-hmm.
And people were kind of justifiably freaked out about that, you know? Well, what if we have a large event? How about sports? You know, how about things like that? How about schools? How does that fit in? And then, after just a few days, as the infections started to go up, as we started to, to be able to ramp up testing a little bit back in March, um, and um other indicators like ICU beds and the hospitals started getting taken up a lot more quickly, and the death count started to increase, she pretty quickly came back and said, um, let's reduce that number from a thousand to one hundred. At that time, just before she went to a hundred, I'd sent a memo over to her saying, please consider reducing it from a thousand, because most of the banquets and things that we have in this county, fundraisers and such, are usually maybe, if they're large, they're four, five, six hundred people uh in that range. And, and, and that would not be healthy, of course, to have a whole bunch of contagious people in a room like that. So this is, this is what Sarah Cody has been doing. And the next step with Santa Clara County became the first uh, the first county in the nation, not just the state, to do shelter in place. A couple days la- later, some Bay Area counties followed suit, as did the state of California. And, and so we have to judge everything by, at this point, I think, why did we do shelter in place? And how is that working? To get to your question. We did it, we did it because she said that this, this can spike, this, the, the infections can surge, the disease can surge so quickly in a population of two million people, that our hospitals would be overwhelmed if we don't try to slow down the rate of infection. She didn't say, we're going to stop people from getting infected. She just said, I want to slow it down so at least we can handle the flow of people coming into our medical systems. And then secondly, let's work on, you know, trying to stop it. So, you know, trying to get vaccines, testing people, obviously, we wanted to ramp up testing, although that's been very, very challenging from the day one. So let's, with the thing, we, we can't control testing very well because there has been a shortage all along of testing kits. There's no vaccine. Um, there's no serology or immunity testing yet. And the tests that do occur, they were even delayed because initially, commercial laboratories like LabCorp, Quest, weren't even allowed to do those. But all the more reason, I think, she came out and said, while we're struggling to ramp up here and across the country, let's shelter in place. In other words, the old-fashioned way to make sure you don't catch something that somebody else has is to keep your distance. So I'm, I, I, Sarah Cody, am going to mandate that we keep our distance, not just at a thousand or a hundred or ten, but you need to stay in place unless, you know, you're, you're an essential worker, or unless you have essential activities, which includes groceries and pharmacy and things like that.
Right.
That's not work, yes, because with only about two hundred vacant hospital beds in the county when this first started, um, we could have easily eaten those up. And you look at New York, you look at Italy, you look at other places in the world where this has happened, even other states, uh, besides the two I just mentioned, there, there have been way, way more per capita, you know, per population, way more incidence of infection um and, and hospital bed utilization and even deaths. So we, we've had a lot. We're fourth in the nation, in the state. So we're still experiencing a lot, but we're experiencing a lot less than had we done nothing. And that is the measure of success.
Yeah, and that's due to shelter in place and everyone's cooperation, just being good neighbors, wearing their mask, um, you know, keeping social distancing, distancing and, and basically following the protocols. So, yeah, that, that, that definitely is good news. Um, and you talked a little bit about testing, and I know that's the first thing people ask about is, well, if um exposed to anyone else, or I'm simply good and I, you know, I, I can carry on. Um, what do you say to that? I mean, it's a, it's a general source of frustration for people.
Yeah, it's been a fr- source of frustration for everyone. And, you know, um, to, to go back to what you're saying, thank goodness for the compassion and the harmonious way that our community here in Santa Clara County has responded to this. I mean, let's face it, there, there, there are some penalties if you don't comply, but I don't believe that's what's causing people to, to comply. I think this is largely been voluntary compliance by people, as you were just alluding to. They're being good neighbors. People want to be good neighbors. People don't want to affect someone else. People don't want somebody who is a senior or in a, a, you know, a, an assisted living facility or an Alzheimer's clinic to unwittingly just, you know, lose their life because somebody was, was, was just reckless enough, you know, uh, to go do something that they shouldn't be doing. And this is a, a, a great, that's really a little less specific, but one of the great uh indicators as well of how well we're doing. We haven't had, um, you know, we haven't had the kind of pushback in this community that you've seen in other communities. Now, that's why I think today's order is so important, because people haven't been pushing back, but people are expecting some progress. And I think today, they got to see some progress in action. You know, there was kind of a reward for the hard work and sacrifice.
You're right. That's true.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree with you on that. Yeah, I agree with you completely. It's, it's sort of a, a good payoff for being I, I want to segue a little bit into, there's so many questions coming in, oh, my goodness. Um, okay, so some of them, um, elders in care, the health department, um, report on COVID nineteen statistics in long-term healthcare facilities and working care facilities. Can you give us a quick update? And then from there, I want to go to um incarcerated individuals, and what's being done about that? Can you talk about those two subjects, please?
Yes. Um, in, in terms of what we call senior congregate facilities, um, any type of facility where seniors are, are necessarily um grouped up in, in the same residences, even the same daycare facilities, there have been problems. Um, in this county, in Alameda County, and in some other places like San Francisco, we have seen where we have people in close proximity like that, especially if they're over sixty-five years old, um, and worse, if they're older. But not only are we getting mass infections or clusters of infection, but people are losing their lives in pretty significant numbers.
Hmm.
Um, and, and that, the county, what is the county doing about that? Um, the county is, is, is put inspectors in those facilities. It's, it's really doing a rigorous job of trying to screen who's coming in and out, what activities they're doing, um, which of those facilities perhaps are not complying with the physical distancing rules. Um, so the county's very much on top of it, but um I suppose in retrospect, if the public health officials weren't so overwhelmed with so many things to do, they may have tried to mobilize people even earlier as a preventative measure into some of the, you know, the nursing homes, the senior facilities. So, um, it, but it does tell you something. We were just talking about the shelter in place work, as it worked.
Mm-hmm.
Well, one of the indicators is to look at places where people haven't been sheltering in place, even in this county, in, in the, in the, in the right way, where people haven't been distancing. And, and you look at senior care facilities, and you realize when you go back and looked at what happened, there are people who are not physically distancing, and look what happened. And, and that's why they're worried about letting us all congregate together, because imagine if you started getting the acceleration of infections and deaths that we're seeing in some of these congregate senior facilities in, in society at large right now. We would be overwhelmed. Um,
Well, it's also very sad that we, we can't be with our loved ones when we really want to. You know, that's the other thing, too, is that we have to maintain that distance for their safety and for ours. And, uh, yeah, it should, that, that's just a very vulnerable population, and I, um, I really feel for them, so.
As, as to the jails, um,
Yeah.
there's, there's been a massive, you know, the county runs the jails, um, Elmoide and the main jail, um, down on Heading Street, and between the county board of supervisors, you know, appropriating money, the sheriff, um, doing her job of restructuring things there. And, you know, us, when I say investing, investing, you know, we have more medical professionals in the jails than, uh, than we've had in a long time, of course, because of this. And frankly, talk about new way of business, we should probably have more medical professionals in the jails permanently, um, because, um, you know, we, inmates need that kind um, because, um, you know, we, inmates need that kind of help, mental health help, medical help, and so forth.
Definitely.
But there has been, there, there's been less, uh, jailing and prosecution of nonviolent offenders, so that the population of the jails are down, which allows more distancing, of course. Um, you know, and they're staying right on top of, of screening and testing, where somebody has symptoms, they're quarantining those, you know, doing a quarantine on those inmates, and keeping them away from the other inmates, to avoid, you know, in the, in the sense, a, a complete breakout in the jails, uh, when I say breakout, I mean, a pandemic breakout, and of course. Uh, but you have, um, in those kind of facilities, you know, homeless encampments, senior congregate care facilities, and jails are all places that are very different, but they're all places that are very, the same in one regard, very similar. They have people in very close proximity, trying to live together under one roof, and, who are not free, you know, to just move to another place, or, or, you know, get, y- use their freedom to, to protect themselves. They're stuck there, and that's, that's, that's where we've seen much higher rates of infection a- and, and loss of life than we've seen elsewhere in society.
Okay, and, uh, let, quickly give me current num- do you have any current numbers on those loss of lives? Um, just, I mean, or just in general, I mean, not to put a downer on everything, but just, I mean, we're such a large city, but we're, I know that compared to other large cities, we're, we're kind of doing okay in that regard, that we, we're taking care of our people, and, uh, you just don't hear that devastation, uh, or that devastating loss of life in the greater numbers, like you do say, in New York, which of course, is not the exact same as Santa Clara County, but, um, you know, has a large population, urban population.
Yes, um, yeah, we, we are doing better, even just from a straight statistical standpoint, as I said earlier, on a per capita basis. I mean, for a community of two million people, um, y- you can't compare us with New York, apples to apples, so to speak, but you can't say, per capita, what is the percentage of our population versus the percentage of their population in ICU? What is the percentage of deaths? What is the percentage of infection, or rate of infection? Those, on all those statistical indicators or categories, you know, we are doing much better than our peer communities. Um, but we still have, as of, uh, yesterday, we had a hundred and six, um,
Hmm.
we had a hundred and six deaths in the county.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I did not yet get to this evening's figures at, at five o'clock when we started the show, but I'm, I'm, it's an educated guess, as much as I hate to say it, that that number probably went up.
Just, mm, yeah.
You know, and it's been going up every day, and that's all the more reason why you kinda understand why the public health officer doesn't want to just completely relax shelter in place. He's already, even with shelter in place, even as good as we're doing, the numbers are still creeping up, creeping up, creeping up. So, uh, fortunately, slowly enough, that we do have enough, uh, respirators, we do have enough ICU beds, we do have enough hospital beds, because the pace of those infections, um, you know, and really even the pace of, of, of the mortality rate is, is pretty slow. Um, but a hundred and six deaths, I, you know, you can't compare this to homicide, or other kinds, other causation of death, is that's not really fair. But sometimes, you know, we actually have constituents fight once in a while, and they'll say, what's wrong with you? Open business back up as usual, a hundred and six deaths in a community of two million people is nothing. Well, you know, we've only been at this since March, of course, there were a couple early deaths, but the bulk of this has happened since March. In, in a matter of less than two months, a hundred and six deaths, if you extrapolated that out over a year, multiply that times six, you, you, you know, we'd have six or seven hundred deaths.
Hmm.
And again, I don't wanna make comparisons, but if you had twenty-eight or twenty-nine homicides in this community over a year's time, uh, people would be concerned.
Yeah, that's true.
Uh, let alone six hundred deaths from a pandemic.
Right.
So, so, no, we're not getting thousands a day like New York, but these are still extremely significant numbers, and we still don't have a way to detect who, and where, and even what is carrying the virus.
Right.
It, it stays on surfaces and things. It, it is, it is, it is, it is a compelling thought, I think, that, to think about the fact that if you were in a room with a hundred people, based on, on statistical and medical analysis, based on the science, without any symptoms at all, a hundred people without symptoms, that it is likely that there's twenty of them that are carrying the virus. So, we all-
No kidding?
Yeah, they're, they're saying one out of five, between one out of four and one out of five people are asymptomatic, but are still carrying the virus and are contagious. So, you have to behave as if everyone's contagious around you, otherwise, yeah, how would you do?
Okay, Supervisor Cortez, that, that's alarming, just to think about that, I mean, it's not, you know, in its aggregate, uh, you know, like you said, it's, it's, anyway, my question is, is that just, when you say one in five, is that for this coronavirus in general? Or you mean, it, it, someone could be symptomatic with any kind of a virus? That, I guess you're just referring to coronavirus, right?
Yes, coronavirus.
In a room of one hundred, there'd be twenty people, say, one in-
Yes, it's been estimated that twenty percent of the population, um, has or will contract coronavirus, however, will not, a huge percentage of, of, of those will not ever show symptoms of any significance. Um, and now, even the CDC is saying, well, we've expanded, you know, our, our, our criteria for symptoms. Originally, it was, boy, watch out if you have a fever, a headache, um, you know, and, and chills, um, and a, and a sore throat. Now, they're saying-
And, yes.
Now, they're saying, if you have a headache continuously, um, and body aches, you could have the virus.
Right.
Well, you know, that gets a little more difficult to assess. They're also saying, if that's what you have, this is right in, you know, the public health department guidelines, don't bother coming in for a test, because again, they're concerned about the system being overrun.
Right, and-
But at the same time, they're saying you very well may have it, you mean, you know, just, they're basically saying, treat it, treat it like it's a cold, even though what you really have is coronavirus, and if it gets worse, by all means, call your doctor and come in.
Right, but they just don't want you going in for those symptoms if you can, uh, self-quarantine at home and take care of yourself there, which makes a lot of sense, so that you're not potentially spreading the virus. And I know people get panicky about it, you know, I, we're gonna take a station ID break right now, but, I mean, I could talk to you for two hours about this, and, and I know people have lots of concerns of, about all kinds of things, I mean, um, law enforcement, education, the rest of, the questions for healthcare, et cetera. But this is, you're listening to KCXU, uh, ninety-two point seven on your FM dial, and we are, um, if you are not able to hear us, you can also go to our website, which is kcxucovid19.org. It's a website that we've created just for these forums that we're having with Supervisor Cortez, uh, kcxucovid19.org. Uh, click on Radio Town Hall Live, and you can, uh, join us. And you can, uh, join us if you wanna call this number, four zero eight, six three four, eight zero eight six. Once again, that's four zero eight, six three four, eight zero eight six. Someone will answer, take a call, and then they'll send that to me. Um, if you wanna text, you can text a different number, which is four zero eight, four eight zero, seven eight three three. Once again, four zero eight, four eight zero, seven eight three three, for text messages only. Okay, Supervisor Cortez, Lilia has a question in North Bay, uh, rather, in the North County of San Jose, and she's asking about restaurants, when they're gonna be open, and, uh, if she can have, um, small groups at her house for dinner parties and that kind of thing. Can people, um, shelter in place with a group of people that they know, or is that too early to do? And, and of course, restaurants, um, you know, will, will life ever be the same, or will be able to return to restaurant, uh, dining?
I suspect restaurant to, to normal. I also believe they eventually will. I mean, breaking bread, uh, with other people socially is probably one of, probably the oldest tradition, um, of, of humankind.
Yeah.
But it, it's not gonna go away, we evolved that way, we're gonna go back to it. Um, but when we're this contagious, and when we have silent contagious killers among us who don't even know that they're carrying-
True, yeah, sure.
Um, you just can't sit down in a banquet, or at tables, and it is, it's hurting restaurants, it's, it's hurting a lot of, of folks who raise money for community-based organizations that use dinners and banquets as a way to raise money. Um, and ultimately, it's gonna hurt in a big way the cities and the county itself, and the state government, because the taxes that are generated by those businesses, um, are, are really a huge percentage, especially for our cities, as, as to what they use to, to pay for police and firefighters and everything else. So, i- it's a-
That's true.
It's a big problem. Um, she asked about, uh, can the congregant-
Dinner parties are having, yeah, congregant, having friends over that you know, maybe, that are not sick, but, uh, she wants to host a dinner party, or just have friends over, play games, whatever they do, you know?
No, you can't, and it's, it's, don't get, don't shoot the messenger here, it's not my rule, but- the rule is, um, is, is because, remember, this virus started to move across the globe very, very quickly, but it also, during the time it was moving, it gave public health doctors, epidemiologists, an opportunity to look at what was happening in, in other places. And eighty to eighty-five percent of the infect- infection cu- uh, clusters that were happening, uh, even in Wuhan, China, and then in Italy, um, were happening in, in household family units. So where they would see three, or four, or five people, it would be in a family unit. And that was either introduced by someone coming over, you know, to visit, or it was exported because somebody came over to visit, and then walked right into a contagious family and left, and then went back to their own family. You see how that works? And now you have two families, so now you have six, and eight, and five, and four, and they started looking at that, and they're saying, these aren't just random people, uh, individuals off the street, these are all family clusters. So, um, I, I think that's also sadly gonna be an area where we're stuck doing, you know, Zoom, uh, for a while. I did a, my wife Patty and I, um, we're Catholics, you know, so, so we're Christian, we celebrate Easter, and-
Easter, right.
Every, every year, we have everyone over the house for Easter, and this year, we had to do it all online, all on Zoom. But at least we got to communicate with each other and share-
What was that like? What was that like, having your Easter celebration on Zoom? That's really, you're very progressive, look at you, that's great.
Well, it was, it was good and bad, right? It was wonderful, I mean, my parents, I'm so lucky, you know, to have them, they're so, they're alive.
Oh, you are.
My dad's eighty-seven, and my mother's eighty-four, but we can't go see them. My sisters drop off groceries for them, and then ring the doorbell and run, you know, because they're afraid they're gonna, they're gonna-
Right.
They might be a carrier, and what if they give it to them, you know? And, um, they're more vulnerable than we are.
Sure.
So, so, so the good news is, we got to hear some of my dad's stories. That is, if we had to hear them, you know, on a computer screen, so. But, but, uh, thank, you know, what if, obviously, back when they had the Spanish flu, or, or during World War Two, when people were sort of self-quarantined, uh, especially here on the West Coast, uh, you, you know, you wouldn't have had this technology to, to catch up with your family and your neighbors, so at least we have that.
Yeah, that's true, at work, yes, that's very true. And that was one of our questions, too, about technology, but, you know, we're almost out of time, unfortunately. So, we are gonna see you next week, May sixth, at six PM, from six to seven. Um, we're gonna have another Radio Town Hall, Live Radio Town Hall series for you, and we look forward to speaking to you about that. Um, let me ask you, uh, Supervisor Cortez, any final words? Anything that Santa Clara County residents should know about before we sign off? And of course, I'll ask you what's making you happy, 'cause we wanna end the podcast, or the show, rather, on a, on a positive note, for, for those of us who are hanging in there, uh, being, um, you know, positive thinkers. Uh, so, final words on, uh, to residents?
Thank you, thank you, thank you. We know that your patience is stretched, I know my patience is stretched.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but those of us who are getting the information every minute, every day, in government, those that you've elected, uh, that have the inside track on information, like me, are here to tell you that it's really, really important that you hang in there a little bit longer. The public health officials will keep making changes, uh, they will incrementally and gradually, um, continue to respond and free us up, um, and this virus, we will beat it. But, um, we're proud, I couldn't be more proud of the people of Santa Clara County for their willingness, their neighborliness, the harmonious way in which they're approaching this, and the compassionate way they're approaching it. So, so this is just a big thank you to, to all the people out there that are doing, that are saving lives, frankly, by doing what they're supposed to do. And what's hap- am I happy about? What am I happy about?
Yeah, oh, that's very nice, Supervisor Cortez, I just wanna thank you for that, because you're very genuine, and, and, um, and I've enjoyed spending this time with you. Um, I think you really are doing, you know, God's work out there, and we appreciate it. I'm not just saying that for, you know, political points or anything, I certainly am not running for office or anything. But from, as a, as a neighbor, as, you know, a neighbor to you and everyone else in the community, um, it is important to thank people for do- for doing the hard work, 'cause it, it is a stretch, it's a sacrifice. Um, you know, we have parents at home, um, you know, with multiple kids, or even if they just have one, and they're not in school and all that, so there's a whole host of things there. But, uh, before I forget real quick, and we go into what's making us happy, as our final, um, end here, um, we, I talked earlier about resources, and you mentioned Santa Clara County Public Health Department as a resource. We'll put that up on our link at the, um, kcxucovid19.org website, we'll do that. Um, is there anything else that we should be looking at in terms of resources, that you can recommend for, for residents?
Well, this is kind of a simple one, but I wanna give the number of my, my office. We're, we are essential workers in, in my office, including me.
Right, yeah.
Four oh eight, two nine nine, five zero three zero. And the reason I said we're essential is because we will always have a couple people in the office, even if the rest are, are rotating on remote work protocol. We rotate two in every day, there's always people there to answer the phones. They can quickly answer your question, or email you whatever link or information you need, or put you in touch roughly with another human being that can help you. So, please take advantage of that.
Oh, that's great. And, right, Supervisor Cortez, um, this is, now, if they're not in your district, your District Three Supervisor for Santa Clara County, does it matter? Can, can your-
No.
Okay, great.
No, it doesn't matter.
And that number again is?
Four oh eight, two nine nine, five zero three zero. And frankly, if they decide they wanna talk to someone in a, a different supervisory office, we'll connect them there, too. I mean, we, they should use that number as a way to get connected, period, and we'll, we'll connect you. That's what we, that's what we aim to do.
Right on, oh, that's wonderful, thank you so much for that, okay. So now, we wanna end our Radio Town Hall program on a positive note, so Supervisor Cortez, what is personally making you happy this week?
You know, I have to say, um, that I've had a greater opportunity, even as busy as we are, to, to feel connected to my own children. I mentioned earlier that I have four kids, and, you know, the youngest one is, in my case, the youngest one is not a baby anymore, he's twenty years old, but was forced to come from college, because the college dorms are all shut down.
Oh, right.
And, um, and to see him, and to get calls, um, from my, my, my daughter that's out of state, my daughter that's out of town, you know, my son who's a schoolteacher, who's doing distance learning with his kids.
Wonderful.
Just hearing from them, as I have almost every day, is, is really made me happy, so thank you for asking.
Oh, yes, of course, that, yeah, that, kids are, kids are our happiness, and, and that's a beautiful, uh, a beautiful thing. Okay, so for me, what's making me happy is something totally not related to kids, or, or, or my own daughter and my grandkids, but it's, um, Amazon Prime series, Bosch. It's, it's been on for several years, I'm late to the party on it, but I love it. It's a Los Angeles, uh, police procedural show, and it just has a lot of heart, it takes place in Los Angeles. I'm on season two, and I, just like I said, I just discovered it, um, over the weekend, and I thought, oh my God, I can't get enough of this, it's making me so happy. It's good writing, good acting, terrific ensemble cast, and, uh, it's just one of the ways that I shelter in place with a little smile on my face. Okay.
That's great, thank you, thank you for sharing that.
Okay, you're welcome. Um, all right, so Supervisor Dave Cortez, thank you for all your helpful information. We'll meet back here next Wednesday, this, the fourth of May, at six PM, for another Live Radio Town Hall program. And we also wanna thank the members of your staff, Tara, um, Siri Krishnam, and Kae Boon-Wen for their contribution in helping us make this radio program happen. And our show could not have happened without the engineering support of our Chief Executive Officer and founder of KCXU Radio, Manu Martinez. Thank you, Manu, shout out to Manu. And, um, we also want- Thank you, Manu. Shout out to Manu. And, um, we also want to have you, um, go to kcxucovid19.org for any, for, uh, for this transcript and podcast. And, uh, we're going to put the links up that Supervisor Cortez mentioned. So until then, we wish you all good health. Thank you for sheltering in place, for wearing your mask in public, and for being just great citizens as it moves this extraordinary time in our history. Thanks again for listening. This is Belinda Casada, signing off at KCXU LP 92.7 FM.
You're listening to KCXU LP 92.7 FM on your dial in San Jose, California.